It is Monday, October the 7th. It is 4:00 PM. We're gonna go ahead and start. I don't think my mic's working. We're gonna go ahead and start our city commission meeting. If I can get roll call, please.
Mayor Shirley?
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here.
Commissioner Householder?
Okay. Go ahead and get our Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Everyone that can stand up, if you all could. I think my voice carries pretty good. The Speaker not being on will be okay.
(inaudible) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one award and proclamation.
Item 3.1, the month of October 2013, as Community Planning Month in the City of Salina. Dean Andrew will read the proclamation.
Mr. Andrew.
Sounds like our sound may not be on at all. Okay. The, throughout the United States, Mayor and Commissioners, the month of October is being observed as Community Planning Month, and we have a proclamation for you. It reads, "Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas community planning plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environment, whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of members of the planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the City of Salina, and whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community planners of the City of Salina and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore be it resolved that the month of October 2013 is designated as Community Planning Month in the City of Salina in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month."
Are there any activities planned for this?
We have some activities that have already occurred and some upcoming activities centered on October. Actually, in September, the City of Salina hosted the State Historic Preservation Conference for the first time in a long time. It was an opportunity to showcase the Seaford Theater, Masonic Temple, Blue Heaven Studio. There was good attendance. The conference was well received. Last Tuesday, October 1st, the planning commission and the Cities Tree Advisory Board hosted their Excellence in Landscaping and Design Awards, and they awarded awards to the Donna Elvenier Children's Center and Longhorn Steakhouse for outstanding landscaping and design work. Last Thursday and Friday, the State of Kansas had its Kansas Planning Conference in Manhattan, where I attended along with Dustin Hersch, one of our planners, and there were 140 planners, planning faculty, and students from around the state at that conference. On the 15th, the planning commission will meet again this month, and they will conduct a public hearing on the proposed changes at the Kansas Wesley and Sports Complex. On the 21st of this month, we're scheduled to have a steady session on the comprehensive plan as part of Community Planning Month. And then at the end of October, planning staff has been asked to teach a class up at Kansas State University at their Landscape Architecture Regional Community Planning Program. And then we have put together, in coordination with USD 305, a talented and gifted program on city planning to get elementary school students interested in planning their community. So, that is not scheduled yet, but we do have that curriculum put together.
Fantastic.
So, thank you.
Is this working now?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
I think it works.
All right, now we'll move on to citizens' forums. If anyone has anything they would like to bring up to the city commission that's not on today's agenda, you may go ahead and do so now.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Mayor and the city commissioners. I would like the public of Salinas to know that on October 12th, we will have a Walk for Life at Jerry Ivory Park. So, if Salina would like to take and have an opportunity to volunteer or raising funds or just helping Walk for Life on October 12th, please go see the Pregnancy Center Service, and they'll work with you. I don't know the number to it, and we need about 5,000 to 10,000 people to help out. We gotta take over Jerry Ivory Park. Thank you so much for your time.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to come up and say? Okay. We have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time. We'll go ahead and move on to our consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of September 23rd, 2013. Item 6.2, award of contract for the replacement of the concrete boiler base at Memorial Hall to American Boiler &amp; Mechanical in the amount of $18,645. Item 6.3, approve the transfer of one ambulance to Fire District Number 2 and one ambulance and Ford Excursion to Fire District Number 3. Item 6.4, Resolution Number 137047, reestablishing a temporary moratorium on the enforcement of the Moba Home Park licensing provisions of Chapter 22 of the Salina Code.
Is there anything a commissioner would like removed or amended from the agenda?
Are we putting any particular timeframe on the moratorium on the trailer park for these folks that are interested in that?
Yes, it's December 31st of this year.
December 31st. Okay. I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, 4-0. Onto administration.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance Number 131079, granting final approval of a property tax exemption for Great Plains Manufacturing.
I didn't have that one. Here. I apologize, I didn't have that one.
Ordinance Number 13-10719, second reading of ordinance. Let's see. It was passed on the first reading on September 23rd, 2013. Since that time, no comments have received.
All those in favor on passing this on second reading?
Wait a minute, we need a roll call. Sorry, roll call. See if there's any public comment on that.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number, see that real quick, 13-10719 on second reading.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. And then I need to get a roll call. I'm sorry, I haven't been here in a couple weeks. I was stuck, so I'm a little lost. Then I didn't have 7.1 in my packet.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Item 7.2, Resolution Number 137046, amending the City of Salina Personnel Manual.
Mrs. Fisher? I have that one.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you, I have a set of proposed Personnel Manual revisions. I can briefly hit what we're changing, and if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. First of all, the introductions, some minor language to allow for electronic access to maybe save some paper for those that prefer access that way. A few definitions, some of these better align with practice or just provide clarification. No real substantial changes. We are, however, changing the hours for the classified part-time as this relates to future provisions of IMPAX Affordable Care Act. And some of these just better, again, better clarified in the definitions when we changed earlier this year to the 26 pay period system. Minor tweaks there. Worker compensation, we are, we've had these posters visible in all of our facilities. This is just making sure that individuals have access to those as well in their manuals due to law changes earlier this year. Vacation, again, a minor edit as well as language cleanup. Other leave, further clarification on what we do when someone has to appear on behalf of the city in court, and then also family medical leave changes. Again, these have been posted in our facilities. It's just going a step further, making sure people have their own copies. The grievance process is a little bit different approach. We're just changing the language and providing some other, I guess, some options within that. Proposing language change from grievance to a resolution request, since I guess our view is that's what we're really trying to do, is sort out issues or situations that employees may have with other individuals as well as usually in the form of a grievance with a supervisor. And then also, the miscellaneous, just clarifying, or this, these are expectations as far as recording devices not to be used unless someone, everyone around is aware of that, unless that is part of the typical operation of the department. I think in a nutshell, that's really it. If you have any questions on any of those, I kinda went through them rather quickly, but I'd be happy to answer anything.
Question about vacation.
Sure.
It looks like, you know, normally it ought to be a fairly easy, straightforward process for how much vacation you have. It looks like you're taking everything out to four digits now?
Yeah, well, that has been our practice. The changes that we're proposing here, although the number still came up with the correct number of hours when we changed the way it accrues and divided it out by 26 rather than having it accrue one time a month in our previous system, it still hits the individual's banks and it has to go out four digits. The, I think it's changing from .0007 to .0004. I mean, that's, even though there's other numbers in between there, I can get to that page. What happens is it's just closer to that number when you're looking at the, over the course of the year. So, it was just, the other number, it was still the same.
It was still the same.
But this is a closer calculation, so we just overlooked it at the beginning of the year.
But I imagine, is that on the pay stub then? How much vacation time is accrued for individuals?
I will have to double-check that. It was at one point, and somewhere along the way, some of the information due to updates from our software vendor kind of dictates what appears on the stub. If the accrual is not, the total bank is on there, and I do not have a stub with me. We do have a vacation calculator that's out on the Intranet because it is kind of cumbersome for people to figure that out. So, we worked with our computer technology department. They were able to take it further than us just providing the information whenever someone calls and people can kinda do a self-service, fill in their information or calculate how much vacation they've accrued and how much they've used.
Okay.
As part of the, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Crawford, did you have?
Well, I was just gonna ask about the grievance procedure. Is this kind of an overall, like from human resources folks and association, that they've changed than just the name of grievance to resolution request, or are there some specific changes that change the process?
It's really, we've learned that there's a real stigma behind people wanting to file the grievance, but they come to us with concerns, and they're really asking for the problem or an interpretation to be settled. So, not really so much a change in the protocol, but changing the forms and trying to make sure people knew this was out as an option. The mediation component that is included in there is different. It is an option in the form of, I should say, it's an avenue that may be used in the resolution request, but it's also available if people are just having interpersonal issues. One thing that I guess I should add to, just part of our Personnel Manual updates, we do make sure that we distribute to these, or all of these to our employee counsel, make sure they have the ability to, you know, talk them over with their departments, provide any kind of feedback or concern, or if there's confusion, or things really don't make sense, or if they think, you know, we are having impact for a department that we weren't intending to, and to provide feedback, and there really wasn't any.
I appreciate that question because it was kind of in line with what I was asking as well. So, my only concern beyond that would be, is there any in this additional option of a mediation where a third party would become, become involved in this? Is there any sort of added cost or any sort of added time requirement from a supervisor or any other person that would be, that would come along with this change?
Structurally, no, because we, we've actually kind of piloted recently when we were having more of an interpersonal problem, but we are utilizing staff we already have in our Human Relations Department. So, we have trained mediators there. That's kind of one of their niche areas. So, we are utilizing them, and we are doing it over the course of work hours. So, I do not anticipate with this as an option that it will cost us any more, other than maybe the time that's not spent on some of the other tasks.
Okay, so a neutral third party would be actually someone outside of that department would be the, would be what the neutral would be referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I guess, just in case.
All still in the, all still with, all in house still?
Right. We tried to model this from a successful program that the City of Wichita has. They actually have gone further and used several individuals that they've trained, but they also have a smaller or a much larger organization that we do. And one of the provisions was the individuals couldn't know each other if they would have these mediation cases going. You know, we really didn't, you know, if we get into that here to where, let's say, it's within the same department, we may have to look to bring in a neutral person outside of the department, but as it is now, our model is that we will use someone internally. And if it's, if it becomes a very, I guess, a popular approach to sorting some of those issues, we may have to look at getting other people trained, or we might have to look at what are options to be there. But, you know, as it stands now, we, we thought we would try it with our trained staff. They're already trained to do mediation work.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this matter? CNN, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 13-7046, allowing changes to the Personnel Manual as proposed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No, I'm, sorry, I'm just slow.
So, that was all?
Yeah, it's okay.
Motion carries, 4-0. Onto development business.
Item 8.1, Resolution Number 137048, authorizing the acceptance of the Sunflower as a donation from the North Salina Community Development Committee for placement at the North 9th Street and Broadway Boulevard intersection.
Mr. Hobbie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, it's my privilege to be able to present to you today a request from the North Salina Community Development Committee, the acceptance of a sculpture that's called Iron Work that has been named the Sunflower, to be placed at a rain garden area that's being dedicated at the North 9th and Broadway intersection. It'd be the southwest corner of that intersection in front of the Villarreal Service Convenience Store. It's been a process over the last couple years that Mr. Zurgar and Mrs. Zurgar came to the North Salina Community Development Committee and asked them what could be done with the former Peace Garden area of the community, and with the fact that they had decided they would like to dispose of the property, gift it to another organization, in which they did gift that property to Habitat Humanity. And presently, as we talk today, there is a house being built on one of the lots in that structure area. Also, in the Peace Garden, there was a structure, an iron structure, called the Sunflower, and they also was curious about what would happen with that Sunflower art piece. And the citizens in the North Salina area decided they really wanted that art structure to be placed in the North Salina area, kept in the North Salina area, and so therefore several locations were looked at and decided upon the location there at North 9th and Broadway. The rain garden area is being developed by volunteers from out in the community. We think this is gonna be an excellent opportunity to set the iron work that Mr. Mydl completed back in the 1970s. We're honored to have Mr. Zurgar with us today as one of the owners of the property, the Iron Works, and we're very pleased to be able to ask you and to accept this Iron Works on behalf of the citizens of Salina. We can get a little more detailed about Mr. Mydl, the actual artist who worked in and designed and structured the Iron Works. Although he is deceased, it has been quite a story, and some of the history that goes along with that is quite interesting. He was a Marymount College student and graduate and worked in several medias within the City of Salina, as well as several excellent sculptors themselves under the auspices of Mr. Bergen, and has been, excuse me, well-known for various structures he has in the community. I thought it was fun to introduce to you the actual picture of that structure as it was set in the 1970s at Marymount College. Therefore, your picture that you have in your program is probably a little bit faded, not dated, because if you think of 1970s color, it's a little bit different than it is in the digital colors we have today. But we'd ask for you on the behalf of the North Salina Development Community to accept the Sunflower art, welded art sculpture to be placed at the North 9th and Broadway by passing Resolution 137048. I'd be more than glad to stand for any questions. I know there's other people in the audience who maybe have more history with this project or this structure than I do, but we would ask that you accept that for us on your behalf today.
Any questions for staff?
No.
Anybody out here that would like to follow up? And I see some right up here.
My name is Ted Zurgar. I'd like to give a little more of the history of the, of the piece. It all began in the year 2001, when we, by we, I mean, Salina Mennonite Church applied and received a Horizon Grant from the Arts and Humanities Commission to do some artwork at the, at what we called the Peace Garden. One of the artists that worked with us was Richie Bergen, and in the process, Nick Bergen asked if we would be interested in this art piece. And, well, I, it's not hard for me to make decisions if someone asks if we want something for free. So, he donated it to the, to the project and, and actually installed it. I, the first, this is the first I know of the naming of it. It did not have a name, as far as I know. And I would, I always said it was an appropriate piece of art for that part of the city because it had just exact, well, the, the medium, it was rusty steel as opposed to stainless steel, which fits that part of, of the city, I think. And I also, it has a certain level of abstraction to it, which I appreciate, and it reminds people of different things. It reminded some people of Sunflower. It reminded some people, more people, of a windmill. And one day, a man drove up with his Harley, Harley Davidson motorcycle, had on the black leather jacket, complete with an eagle on the back, and said, "I think the eagle looks real cool." So, he saw an eagle there. So, I, it's out of our hands, but I would prefer that it be, that it go unnamed. As a piece of art, it reminds people of different things, and I think that, that is good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
Any other public comment or more history on this piece?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. I want to thank you for the opportunity to stand before you today. My name is Nancy Bassett. I live at 133 Melville Road. I am Larry's first cousin. We come from a large Catholic family. And Larry's mother and his siblings were not able to come to the meeting today, so I am graciously here to say thank you to the city. I want to thank Mr. Zurgar and his wife, the North Salina Community Development Committee, the Community Art and Design Committee, the Greater Salina Foundation, the City of Salina Commissioners and Staff for recognizing Larry's talents and locating the Sunflower on North 9th Street, which I think is very appropriate because during the time that Larry was here, South Salina was not developed. I'm sure he spent a lot of time in North Salina, whether it was at Max Barbecue or where, but I think that's a very appropriate site. Other than that, I believe the family would like to be in town for the dedication whenever that is, so we will need to keep them informed of that. But at this point in time, I just wanted to simply say thank you to the City of Salina.
Thank you. Looks like we have another one.
I'm Greg Stevens, 842 South 10th. And Larry is also a cousin of mine, not as close as Nancy, but his father and my father were friends. We grew up in the same township, Ellison Township in Decatur County, and his, his father and my mother were first cousins. And we rode the school bus together. I come from a large family, just like Larry did. And Larry, I went to Leoville High School, which was in Decatur County. Larry went to (noise) high school in Lenora, which was the other way. Our hometown was New Amalo, which is a little Catholic community in southwest Norton County, still there. After high school, we went our different ways, and I kinda lost track of Larry, and, but I did keep in touch with his parents, and they lived in Colby, Kansas. And I didn't know that this was Larry's artwork when the Peace Garden, when we were talking, Ted, about the Peace Garden, but I knew that he'd been involved with some pieces in town, and he liked to do that kind of thing. And after he left, he had a sister that went to school at Marymount, too, and she's in California now, that, and she's kind of a musician and maybe a counselor. After Larry left, he moved to Denver, and he got into fixing vans. So, he would paint vans, and he'd carpet the insides, and he was really good at this. And then he went to Tampa, and then he went to California and did this. And that's pretty much where, what he spent his time doing was that kind of work. And he has since passed away, and he's buried at, in Leoville, which is the little community where I went to school, and, which is west of his hometown, where his grandparents helped organize this community, and his great-grandparents. So, it's an interesting story with a lot of ties, and like Nancy, I'm glad that we could recognize this piece of artwork that he's, that he's created. The other ones he's done are kind of interesting, too, and I think they're around here in the community somewhere. So, thank you.
Any other public comment on this? CNN, I'd bring it back to the Commission.
Madam Mayor, would it, would it be appropriate to amend the resolution, to rename the, the piece Unknown, or Unnamed, I should say, to, to align itself with the, the donor's wishes?
I think that would be appropriate.
All right. Well, what I would like to do then, Madam Mayor, is to move that we gratefully accept and pass Resolution Number one three dash seven zero four eight, and authorizing the acceptance of the unnamed sculpture as a donation from the North Salina Community Development Committee for placement at the North Ninth Street and Broadway Boulevard intersection.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries four zero.
And we ought to thank Commissioner Blanchard for all the work that, I know many others have done a lot of work down there, where they're going to place this piece, but I know that Commissioner Blanchard has done a terrific amount of work.
And there are Gary Hobbie and Darren Wright.
Several others.
Greg Stevens. And thank you, I'd like to just say thank you to Ted Zurgar, for giving us the opportunity to, to keep this sculpture in North Salina, and for taking such good care of it over the years. And thank you also to Greg and Nancy for sharing a personal story about the artist and his family. And hopefully, we'll have a dedication at some point with the rain garden and, and everything else. And of course, that's being all done with volunteer work, so we don't have a finish date yet, but it's been a neat project so far, and I have every expectation that it'll continue to be a very unique community project, so.
I just think this is just the perfect example of giving back to your community, and I do appreciate it. That's fantastic. Onto item eight point two.
Item eight point two, Resolution Number thirteen seventy forty-nine, establishing the amount of just compensation and stating the policy regarding the acquisition of right-of-way and easements for the Ninth and Cloud improvements.
Mr. Bingsden.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. You may have noticed that we added this today, and I would explain that staff work on Friday, coupled with the league meeting next Monday, and our desire, our hope to continue to advance the project, prompts us to ask that you consider this item today. It's, as always, your discretion as to whether you do so or not. But we are at the stage in the, in the process where the appraisals have been received, staff has reviewed and discussed those federal law and KDOT requirements, as you might expect, want to be sure that you have authorized us to go forward with the acquisition of the combination of right-of-way and permanent util, or permanent easements and temporary easements necessary to complete the Ninth and Cloud intersection improvements. The aggregate of the appraised value of those various interests in real estate, as you see there in Section One of the resolution, is eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. As you might imagine, at this stage of the negotiations, that is addressed in the aggregate, because we are in a negotiation process and would make offers to each of the property owners in the amount of those appraisals, but it is still a negotiation process. So that total is currently stated in the aggregate. And as the resolution also indicates, the city manager has delegated the authorization to actually enter into those agreements and to report to you as we progress through that process. With that, I'll see if you have any questions, and we would appreciate your approval of the resolution that will enable us to continue the acquisition process.
Was there, was there any sort of estimate of what this number might be before the project started? Were we pretty close to where we thought it might be?
I would expect that Mr. Stack or Mr. Nelson would want to address that. I don't recall that myself. This is just one component of the acquisition aspect, so.
Yeah, I don't, design, construction, right-of-acquisition, utility relocations, typically that's a project cost overall, and so we don't, I don't know if we have a good number for what that's going to be at the beginning of the project. There's usually a percentage that you have. I'm trying to think exactly with utilities and right-of-way is the certain percentage of the actual total amount, so it's, I don't know if this, I don't know what the exact question.
So these seven, I guess, probably pinpoint my question down.
Okay.
The seven parcels I take it are fifteen feet or thirty feet or whatever, of seven parcels that, that are adjacent to the, that are in the right-of-way now, would be.
Yeah.
If it's helpful, Commissioner, the, for example, as I mentioned, those seven parcels all have a combination of interests. And as you might imagine, generally those that involve the acquisition of right-of-way are going to be the more significant ones in terms of compensation. Three of those are in excess of ten thousand dollars, and in fact, are under the review appraisal process as we speak, since those that are over ten require the review appraisal. That's not an entirely separate appraisal. It's merely a confirmation that the, the initial appraisal was completed according to federal requirements. So that's a, hopefully, a little bit of an idea of the mix that we do have. Those range, as you might imagine, from some of those that are over ten into a group of those that are obviously less than ten, when we don't have right-of-way involved.
Okay. Yeah, with utility easements, temporary easements, sidewalk easements, and right-of-way, all those have different, quite a few different values, and yeah, some are affected more than others. So there's three that are within that, or that need the review appraisal, just because they're higher than the ten thousand dollar threshold.
Okay. And there was no, nothing in there was, no hang-up on anything? Everything pretty, go pretty smoothly? Everybody's happy?
Well.
This is just the, yeah, this is just the appraisals, right? This is?
Yeah, this is the appraisal. And that's the basis of the offers.
Right.
We're just at the point of needing to have your authorization to make those presentations. So, so we will know.
And then what's the time schedule, the timeframe on that, that you would anticipate then? I apologize for getting the appraisal backward, but.
Oh, no, no, that's fine.
But what, any, any idea of the timeframe for, like, the acquisition?
Kind of one of the reasons to try to get this today is the sooner we can start, we've got the appraisals, we can get the offers extended, we can send out the letters, we can start talking to people, as long as we have this today, this process today.
Yeah, this will enable us to get those letters out. And as you might imagine, it's a, we're, we're fortunate in Salina in that we generally had success in terms of being able to negotiate these acquisitions. And we just have to move on that as, as quickly as we can and come back to you if there are any snags.
And we're, we're trying to hit a spring of two thousand fourteen construction season, so we've got a few months to get those done. However, it's timely that we get started and find out if we have any challenges or hiccups, and then get back to you, if that's the case.
Sooner the better.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Any public comment on this matter? CNN, I'd bring it back to the Commissioners.
I move we approve Resolution Number thirteen dash seven oh four nine, establishing the amount of just compensation and stating the policy regarding the acquisition of right-of-way and easements for the Ninth and Cloud improvements, project number eleven twenty-eight seventy-two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Item eight point three, second reading ordinance Number thirteen tens seven one five, amending Sections eight one seventy-five and eight one eighty-nine of Chapter Eight, Article Three, Divisions Two and Three of the Salina Code pertaining to continuing education requirements.
Mr. Hobbie.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We thank you for also, for adding this to your agenda today. The resolution, or, excuse me, the ordinance was passed in September on its first reading, and at that time, the city attorney and city staff had some questions and want to refine the verbiage within that ordinance to define more clearly what the city codes actually resemble. So city staff has worked with city attorney's office to now define those city codes as international building and residential codes, the international and uniform plumbing codes, the international bill, or international and uniform mechanical codes, as well as the National Electric Code, the Americans with Disabilities Act, and the Americans with Disabilities Act Accessibility Guidelines, and other training that's been approved by the building official, as being accepted as continuing education units for the continuing education requirements for relicensing of a contractor within the community. All we did between the two readings is actually define more clearly the codes that we actually have adopted within the community, and therefore, the testing, or, excuse me, the continuing education would then need to be for those codes from those specific trade families. We discussed multiple things, considering we have adopted the two thousand and six international codes, as well as some of the uniform codes, and we decided that there are many contractors within the community, whether they be general contractors or trade-specific contractors, who are studying under some newer codes in two thousand and nine or the two thousand and twelve, or maybe under the International Code of Mechanical and Plumbing Officials, rather than the Uniform Plumbing Codes. So we more formally defined the codes in which we would accept continuing education for contractor license in the community. If there's no questions, we'd ask for you to go ahead and pass on second reading the ordinance Number thirteen one zero seven one five, adopting the changes for continuing education with, requirements within the City of Salina.
Any questions for staff? Any public comment on this matter?
My name is Tracy Sin. I'm at three four zero and a half, South Connecticut. In order to pass this code, there has to be more educations looking into it, because some of these houses are very old, you know, like a hundred years old, a hundred and fifty years old. And some of these people do not have money to change this, switches that. And I'm sorry that I'm totally against this, but it, it's just uncalled for. And sometime, I know the neighbor kind of bickering between each other, because the car wasn't parked right. The shed, shed, whatever they call them, I mean, you know, there's going, Salina, and Salina has lots of old homes, houses. And they were purchased at a certain time, and it was made that way. The owner has to pay for them fixing, you know, such as shed and stuff like, the, you know, it just, to me, it doesn't make sense at all, and I need someone to explain to me.
Mr. Sin? This, this code change is for continuing, excuse me, continuing education for contractors? I think what you're referring to is the problem.
Oh.
You're talking about the property maintenance code. It's a separate.
Oh, all right, then. I just, I just fell asleep. I'm sorry.
They sound similar, but they're, this is just for continuing education requirements and opportunities for contractors.
Okay, okay.
That is what you're referring to.
What I don't understand is that why do we have contractors from other cities, other than Salina, Kansas?
That, that is just a function of.
Is Salina contractors or builders not good enough?
Because it would be illegal for us to artificially not allow contractors inside our community. So you have to do that. But what this is about is making sure wherever they're from, whether they're from Salina or from somewhere else, that they're properly trained and licensed to do the job, so you have good, safe construction.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I just thought my mind was one somewhere else.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this matter? CNN, I'd bring it back to the Commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt on second reading, ordinance Number thirteen dash one zero seven one five, amending Sections eight dash one seven five and eight dash one eight nine of Chapter Eight, Article Three, Divisions Two and Three of the Salina Code pertaining to continuing education requirements.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I got this one now. May I have a roll call, please? Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
That motion carries four zero. Onto other business, which.
Mayor, oh, I'm sorry.
If I, just under other business, I'd like to thank Dean and the planning staff for all the hard work they do, being that it is Planning Month. And can, can we verify the date of a joint planning and city commission meeting to discuss comprehensive plan? Is that the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. Okay. And that would be at one P.M., correct?
Yes, correct. One o'clock.
Okay. And that's it.
Mayor was going to mention briefly, I wasn't sure who had the opportunity to address the motion for the executive session, but there was also a modification on your agenda there. The principal purpose of the executive session is preliminary discussions related to the acquisition of real estate. If time allows, there is a matter that I would appreciate the chance to visit with you about, so we added that it may very well also involve an attorney-client privileged discussion, and that's the reason for my hieroglyphics on the motion.
Very well. You have the pleasure once again. So Madam Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for forty-five minutes, to discuss matters pertaining to the acquisition of real estate, for the reason that public discussion of the matter would adversely affect the city's position in relation to the acquisition of the real estate, and to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at five twenty, oh, I'm sorry, five thirty P.M.
Second. I have a motion and two seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are now in executive session.